Thank you. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a moment of silence for all of our troops overseas and at home. Thank you. I just wanted to announce we had an executive session this evening to discuss litigation and personnel issues. We have announcements.
Madam Chair, may I start? We just have one thing to clean up for the agenda.
Thank you.
It's not on the agenda currently. We need a motion to amend the agenda to include an approval for the supplemental bill list, so we'll need a motion to add item 5B, a motion to approve the supplemental bill listed January 31st, 2024, in the amount of $1,305,522.87. So you'll need a motion for that.
Motion?
Motion.
We need to...
And then, yup.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so when we get to...
Motion carries 5-0. Chair votes aye.
Okay. And when we get to item 5B, we'll take the formal vote on the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Okay. Announcements. Janice, would you like to start?
I'd be happy to, thank you. I just wanted to make a motion... Excuse me. The Rotary Club is having several different events coming up as our anniversary is coming forward. We will be doing a cleanup in conjunction with the EAC. I wasn't expecting to go first because usually I'm not in line, so we'll be doing that in March, so we're looking forward to that. There's also a pool for the Super Bowl coming up, so if you can get your tickets online, you can do that. So I'm going to share that with Jess, too, so hopefully you can get that up on our site as well. So there's a lot of things that are happening with the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Council. Thank you so much. I don't know why all of a sudden I can't speak. I know those of you that know me, I can... I should sit on my hands. But anyway, and this is the month of love, so a lot of us are wearing red today, so that's kind of exciting, so everybody be nice to one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Chuck?
I have no announcements at this time, thank you.
Judy?
No announcements for me, thank you.
Ken?
The only thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank the municipal authority for helping us out in the last snowstorm. They did an outstanding job.
Yes, they did! And Public Works!
And Public Works, yes. Yes, our Public Works is... And between them and the municipal authority, I mean, I know where I live over off of Lingo, it's for years I just assumed that having six inches of snow in the street was normal, but you guys did a nice job, and thanks to everyone.
An excellent job to all that participated. Thanks, Ken.
Madam Chair, I did have one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody in Wormminster for all the kind thoughts and nice cards, flowers, candy, and food that was sent to me during my recent accident and hospitalization, and I consider myself one lucky person that I didn't have to have my head drilled after I fell on the cement, so thank you all.
We're so glad you're here tonight, Judy.
Me, too.
Okay. Last but not least, Parks and Rec announcements. In partnership with the Wormminster YMCA, the Flying Leprechaun Fund Run for ages zero to 12 will be Saturday, March 9th, at 10:00 a.m. at the O'Neill Pavilion in Wormminster Community Park. The one-mile race is designed exclusively for kids up to age 12, so you can wear them out and they won't bother you when you take them home. Visit the YMCA website to register for this event. Okay, next, the annual Line &amp; Cheese Designer Bang Bingo, which is one of the huge events for our Parks and Rec. The fundraising event will be held on Friday, April 5th, at the Vance Wilson Senior's Activity Center. Registration is now open by visiting the Parks and Rec, and you can do that, wormisterpa.myrec.com. The Bark Park membership applications and renewals have moved online to wormisterpa.myrec.com. Mandatory Bark Park orientation occurs on the third Tuesday of each month at the rec in Wormminster Community Park. Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting have moved to the third Wednesday of each odd-numbered month at 6:30 p.m. These meetings are open to the public and take place in the rec in the Wormminster Community Park. That's all I have this evening. Okay, we have presentations. Our first presentation is 2024 Road Paving and Curb Ramps. Gilmore and Associate, Aaron, you're on deck.
I should think, I think Andrew is on deck.
Oh, is Andrew? It said Aaron on here, so...
It says Aaron, Andrew, they can fight over.
Aaron and Andrew, the team!
Here, enough will be good.
These two just stand up and do it.
Favorite day of the year, presenting the nominees for the worst roads in Wormminster. This year, we will be paving the roads in red on the map, as you see in the center. This would include Mueller, Harding, Brook, Howell, Mason, Orchard, Phillips, a portion of the industrial area of Lewis with Ivy Land and Thomas Drive, and Mary and Catherine. This is continuing off our five-year plan, that we continue to adapt. After we complete one year, we then move on and, you know, always have a five-year plan to work off of. Most of these roads, well, the majority of these roads haven't been paved in over 30 years, so it's not as if, you know, we're neglecting some neighborhoods to pave these roads instead. These roads are in much need of repair and all that, so... Then we also have the curb ramp program, which this year we will be focusing within the Speedway. Also within the Speedway, as you can see, the pink and turquoise lines, that will be the work performed by the municipal authority for stormwater and water main work. So we'll kind of be working within that same neighborhood, this way to kind of eliminate a prolonged construction within that neighborhood of doing, you know, work last year, this year, next year's proposed paving, and then proposed ramps, and kind of consolidate the construction times to reduce the impact within that neighborhood. So those are the proposed roads, Aaron's and Gilmore have helped create these maps in our road list. If there's any questions.
I just have a comment. Tim, Andrew, Aaron, all of you that are involved in this, doing a phenomenal job, phenomenal job. I mean, when you're talking about the roads, I've been living here for 40-some years. It was pothole city! Now, the last few years, we have paved more roads than we ever... 25 miles versus a couple. And then you're doing the ramps, which is greatly needed, replacing pipes, too. I know, Tim, you're doing... It's probably off subject, but everything that you're doing is, and it's great work that's being done. And the residents, they do comment to me all the time how nice the roads are, so I wanted to pass that on to you.
Madam Chair, actually, you kind of headed in the right direction where I was going to ask Aaron if she could just comment on, we have a summary of the five-year handicap ramps, I believe, over the last five years, including what's proposed. How many ramps are we going to have, handicap ramps?
Including this year, will be at about 250 curb ramps that have been upgraded throughout the township, and I believe since 2021, including this year, it'll be about 40 miles.
Forty miles.
Wow!
I thought it was higher than 20.
Wow! I'm going to faint now. Thank you, that's awesome news.
Tim, do you want it? If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, oh, definitely.
Do you want to come up and just give a quick... Because this is, I know it doesn't look like we're paving a lot of roads this year, but we're holding off so we can get a major infrastructure project done. Before we finish the infrastructure project, and we're investing quite heavily in the Speedway area, so, Tim, go ahead.
Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Tim Higgy, I'm the General Manager of the Authority. Thank you for those kind words earlier about paving, we're happy to help out when we can. For 2024 capital projects, we're working with Andrew and Aaron for paving, future paving work, particularly in the Speedway. So we are doing twice as much water main as we normally would in 2024, hopefully. We haven't bid any work out yet, it's in design, but we're looking to do Namorol from Sunami to Park, that's the pink lines in the middle of your screen. Maple, we're doing Evergreen to Park, Calmia, Evergreen to Madison, and these are all, all the rest of them are Evergreen to Madison. Juniper, Grape, Elm, Date Beach, and Aspen. Evergreen from County Line to Grape. Last year, we did Olive, Ivy, and Fur, and hopefully we're going also, we have a project on Prospect in the avenues this year, we're going to be doing water main replacement. And with all these jobs, there is stormwater work to be done in conjunction with it. So we're upgrading the water mains, we're upgrading hydrants outside this area, but we're trying to keep up with the road program to try and stay ahead of that.
Well, you are reaching all the goals that you wanted to do and then some. Thank you, Tim.
Sure.
Anything else you wanted to tell us?
We're going to be starting stormwater on Phillips in a couple of weeks. There's about 600 linear feet on Phillips that we're going to be replacing before the paving program. You see, I keep looking at my shoulder because Andrew's coming up, he's going to be paving, we got to stay ahead of him, so... That's going to be starting in a couple of weeks.
Right.
We have, and we'll be back probably in April to give you a much fuller agenda of what we're doing, but I can tell you, we, our budget is about $19 million in water and sewer operating revenue, and in a good operating authority, probably does 10% of that in capital, that'd be 1.9 million. We're doing 16 million.
Wow, wow.
So...
One of the, one of the big advantages of having the municipal authority here in the township and not a private company.
Right.
It's the biggest advantage, I agree.
I see there's a, there's a, quite a, quite a list of stormwater to be done in the Speedway as well. For stormwater, I see the list here, Phillips...
We have a lot of catch-up to do on stormwater. We've, we have some of the basins that need work permitting and approvals by FEMA. FEMA's finally approved, and we're up to about 30 meetings with FEMA, three different managers. We finally got approval, they pass it off to PEMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management, so they've released some of those funds, so we're looking forward to finally getting some of those bigger capital projects done on the stormwater side.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any questions for me?
I do have a question about the curbs, though, if I could. Are we going to go back to curbs? Just a moment. And I brought this up last year when we were doing curbs and doing the paving, and typically, they have always paved the roads and gone back in and then do the ADA corners. This year, are we going to do the corner, the curbs, the ramps first and then pave?
Like I said, we're doing that to minimize the impact on the Speedway, and we still have ramps to catch up on from previous years.
Right, but the ones that you're going to do the, are you doing the ramps before you pave the roads?
This year, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
But there's still outstanding ramps that need to be completed.
Yeah, there was so much paving that happened that you just couldn't keep up with ramps.
Well, I understand that, but the nice thing with speedways, most of the streets don't have curbs, so then that would be the opportunity to be able to do that one. I was just curious. Thank you.
There's still a lot of ramps along Evergreen and Madison, people don't realize they're there, so...
Awesome, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Also, the other half of Norristown, sorry I neglected to mention that.
Great.
The government completed their work last year, so we'll be able to pave the second half of that this year.
Yeah, thank you.
Be nice to see that Lewis Drive get done, too. That's a nice investment in the industrial complex as well.
That's pretty rough.
It will be.
It is rough.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, and ladies and gentlemen, the board, now that the, we've done our public presentation, we're going to ask the team to assemble the bid package and put it out according to the Pennsylvania PA requirements for bids, and we will bring back to the board at the appropriate juncture the results of the bids and authorize, at that time, the board to award the bid as we, through the determination process. So, we're going to start. This is going to be going out to bid. That's my point.
The earlier, the better.
Both, both, both projects, the street repaving and the curb construction.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
And we've been doing that for the last five years because the earlier you get the bids out, the lower the costs are. If you wait to bid till April Bay, you're getting hammered with costs. So the contractors are always much cheaper in January, February, and March with their bid packages.
So the earlier, the better.
The earlier, the better.
Okay.
Don't give it away.
Okay, I'm not telling anybody. All right. At this time, we'd like to introduce our Parks and Rec Director, Jessica Fox, who will be presenting the Holiday House Decorating Contest.
And we have pictures this year.
Yes, we have pictures this year, yes. I'd also like to bring up Karen Sutman from the Wormminster Rotary. They were our partner in this program this year, and because of that, we were able to have two categories and three winners in each category. So thank you to the Rotary, and if Karen can come on up, that would be great. Having partners like this really does enhance, enhance our programming. So, oh, do I have a clicker? I do. Okay, so this was the second year that we hosted the Holiday House Decorating Contest, and yet again this year, it was a huge success. We had a lot of fun with this, our residents had a lot of fun with this, and there are some countywide lists of houses, and Wormminster was on those lists this year with our Holiday House participants, so that was kind of cool.
Oh, that's awesome. Yay!
Okay, so our first category is our classic category, and we're going to bring up our first-place winner in the classic category, and that is the Stever Household.
Wow, it's pretty. It's beautiful.
Wow.
And our first-place winners are receiving a gift card, a certificate, and a Parks and Rec mug with a Rotary pin inside. And if you don't mind hanging around just till the end of this, we'll do a quick picture at the end.
What does the 76/90 indicate?
Oh, great question. So the total points that were, that you could have were 90 points, and the Stever Household scored 76 out of 90 from our volunteer judges.
Thank you.
Very nice.
And our second-place winner, they, I don't believe are here tonight. The Jacoby Household, did they get here? They did not. Okay, so the Jacoby Household is not here, so theirs will be delivered to them tomorrow. Some of our winners are just unable to attend on this specific night, but we do have four out of the six here today, so it's...
Oh, great.
So the Jacoby Household on Catalpa, am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And our third-place winner, with 68 out of 90 in the classic category, is the De... We just...
De Jacamo.
De Jacamo.
De Jacamo family, I just asked them how to pronounce it before we started. So if we could have them come up for their award? Thank you so much. And we'll bring them up again at the end for a picture. Okay, so our second category this year, this was on Lingo. Our second category this year was the extreme category. That was, where, those were houses set to music, that kind of thing, different types of extreme decorations. And our first-place winner is the Gilding Family, and they were a winner last year on Fairfield Drive. Their house is really, really unique. They have these scenes out front, you can see in the top, and then the details of those are in the bottom. This is a really cool display every year, and our judges really enjoyed this one. So the Gilding Household?
86 out of 90, that's pretty impressive.
That's pretty good, yes.
Oh, yes, yes, I'd rather. Thank you.
Our second-place winners, the Benedettos, with 79 out of 90 on Space, I don't believe they're here tonight. This one is really cool, too. They are set to music, and it's a light show, it's a very cool one, and they do this every year, and they add a little bit every year. This year, they have that giant Santa in the middle, which is quite an interesting piece, and every year, this one's a crowd pleaser, too. But they are not here with us today, and we will stop by and see them tomorrow. And our third-place winner in the extreme category with 76 out of 90 is on Oakleaf Lane, and this is the Maguire Household, and they were also one of our winners last year. He was just saying he starts the day after Halloween to get everything ready.
I'll bet.
So there's a lot of commitment and awesome holiday energy that goes into these houses. And again, we want to thank the Wormminster Rotary for allowing us to expand the program this year.
Yay!
If we could have all of our winners come up really quickly for a picture with our board members.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take a recess.
Yes, recess.
I can't see him from over here anymore.
Oh, I can see him right there, he's going like this.
Okay.
I see his shadow. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we're going to reconvene. We have no land use matters tonight. Onto the consent agenda. Before I start with the consent agenda, I would like to defer to our Township Manager, Tom Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm requesting that we defer item 4B, the Considered Agreement with Princeton Holding Solutions. There's a matter that I haven't taken care of yet before, that needs to be done before we can approve the agreement, and I would ask that we table it until the, have the board's approval to table it until the next meeting.
Okay, motion to table 4B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0, Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So on the consent agenda, we consider the approval of the Board of Minutes dated January 2nd, 2024. Consider Change Order Number 1, CN-23-04, Werner Park. It's the lighting improvement to extend the time extension for substantial completion date to 2/29/24, and the final completion date, wait till you guys hear this, March the 15th, 2024. Thank you, Ken. Hey! He did really work on that project and get it going. All right, next?
Thanks, Ken.
I just sit here and look good.
Consider Resolution to revise, amend the Township Fee Schedule for subdivision and land development applications, zoning permits, and construction permits. May I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
A second.
Any questions from the public?
I just have one comment.
Certainly.
The reason that they're asking for an extension on the time is because of the weather. It's been raining so much, and it's saturated, and the equipment, it's hard to get equipment in and out, plus it would do extensive damage to the grass field.
Thank you for that, Ken. Okay, with any other questions from the board, public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Finance report, I'll defer to Mr. Chuck Haybock.
I'd like to motion to submit the bill listed January 31st, 2024, in the amount of $1,305,522.87.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Chair votes aye, 5-0. Thank you, Chuck. We have no unfinished business.
I'm sorry. We got one unfinished business.
Mr. Ramy.
Mr. Ramy's.
Oh, sorry, John.
Can't forget this guy.
No problem.
I told my husband, will you say a prayer that I don't make a mistake tonight?
Ah, there's no mistakes.
I'm going to start by apologizing, I think, the last meeting, but my daughter had a play that she's been working on for months.
That's okay, John, go ahead, right ahead.
So looking at the general fund, this is the first time we're seeing some year-end numbers. These are un-audited, they will change, because we're going to have accruals reversing last year to this year. If you look at, straight at the financial statements, there actually is a decrease in fund balance in the general fund of 904,000. That's probably one of the better things in the financials, because if you remember, in November, we approved to do a budget amendment. So that's $900,000 loss after over $3 million transfer. So if that transfer didn't happen, the general fund looked really good. So again, we were having extra revenue for a couple of years, building up those reserves, send it over to the capital fund so that the capital fund could keep doing the good things that it's doing. So if you look at the summary that's in your packets with the orange tabs, what I usually do, I take out the transfers, and so it's more apples to apples of year-to-year revenues, so you can see them. Revenues without any kind of transfers were up 6.37%, a little over $1 million from the prior year, which is great considering there was decreases in transfer taxes, but all those decreases were made up by a consistent increase in earned income tax. So that worked out. The expenses, they were up 1.3 million. The expenses were actually 101% on a $15 million budget, so we were 1% off from budgeting our total expenses without transfers.
That's because you're awesome.
So like, we were, we were dead on with the expenses. That's one thing I'm like, super happy about. Besides that, everything else is looking good for the year-end. Now it's February, I was able to file all the year-end reports for Liquid Fuels, the DCD reports. We're going to start working on the audit, so hopefully I'll be able to get everything audited, we'll get everything done on time, and we'll have a nice report again. The only other thing I want to report out, as I was preparing for January, I was able to import the budget, and I was able to get a report of everything I imported, and I thought this was interesting. We budget 697 line items in the budget, revenues and expenses. I do have to thank Tom, even Jill, Jess, Chief, Andrew Houloff, everyone, this doesn't happen by one person. So everyone's input, that's how you get 700 line items in a budget. The total debits, which is pretty much the expenses, are just over $34 million. So just the idea of what goes into running this township, that's the easiest way of breaking it down.
$34 million corporation.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Exactly.
John, great, great news, John.
Well done, John.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, no. Any questions? Or the only other thing, I'm sorry, I forgot to say, so we talked about the general fund, I did go through the financials. Every other fund had an increase in fund balance for 2023. Again, on audit, there's going to be some changes and everything, but every single fund is moving in a positive direction, even after some capital expenses coming out of some of those funds.
Wow.
So that is another thing, if you look at the bottom line of each one, we're still looking really good.
I'll tell you, John, before all of you came on board and we were facing bankruptcy and we hired all of you, you're, everybody is rowing in the right direction, and look at us financially. Nobody can recoup from being in that kind of financial position to where we are now, unless we had the best people. So I want to thank you for your great report and your continued success here. Thank you so much.
If I may, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank all the residents for paying their taxes on time as well, because that makes his job much easier.
That's right.
Which in turn makes our job much easier, and all the department heads as well. So if not for the residents, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in.
That's why we're here, for all of you.
I'll even add the tax collector on that one, because she's a little bit...
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
Bobby does a great job. Yes, she does.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Consider the award of the Wormminster Community Park Basketball Court Repair. New business. Consider, consider the award of the Wormminster Community Park Basketball Court Repair Contract to Top A Court LLC in the amount of fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents for all items under the base bid. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions from the public?
From the board?
Any questions from the board?
Just a comment. This, this is a repair for some mischievous activity, which we hope to prevent in the future. I know Jess has some plans on how to secure that.
We're taking steps now, too, to eliminate some of it, but Jess got some, she's got some tricks in her, in her book.
So, just another example of, of some, some mischievous behavior that costs the township. In this case, fifty-seven thousand dollars. We are hoping to recoup.
Vandalism.
Through, uh, through, through the insurance liability subrogation. No, I understand that, but just, just another example of what happens when you have people that don't respect public property. And we hope that that starts to wane in the future.
I agree. I agree.
That's why it's important to have a good Parks and Rec department, so we can get the kids doing something constructive rather than destructive.
And we have that.
Yes. She keeps everybody busy in a township.
I was just shocked at the difference. I was just shocked at the difference in the two quotes that we got for this. How substantially different the prices were, so.
Any other comments?
Good choices, right, Jess? Good choices?
Any other comments? Yes.
Chair, or is there no unfinished business?
We didn't vote on that yet, I don't think.
I know. We skipped a lot.
We didn't, we had finance report, and we didn't have, I didn't have any unfinished.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
And then we just went to new.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes five oh. Professionals report. How about if we start with Mr. Tom Scott?
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right. You're all good.
Yeah. Change the seats. With the, yeah. Thank you. I want to point out that as we had moved from 2023 to 2024, we have now held three public meetings in the, since January, starting January 2nd. I believe we're going to actually need to keep the February fifteenth meeting that has been scheduled and advertised on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors for at least the time being. No objection?
Yeah, the week.
You don't have to vote. No, I know. I'm just saying, no objection. Oh, you're saying no objection. Yes, that's correct. Because usually when we cancel it, we ask if there's any objections.
Yeah, right.
I don't have any objection to that either.
Does anybody have any objections?
So, we're gonna try to keep the, if we need to have it, we're gonna try to keep the, the items few and far between.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have anything to share. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Sure and sweet, to the point. Okay, let's go to Mr. Scott Holpert for his report.
First, we'd like to welcome Judy back. Great to see that you're back, so it's great to have you.
Thank you, Scott.
Of course. And like Tom, I'm gonna keep it short. I did a lot of talking back there in the executive session, so I got nothing additional to report at this time.
Okay, thanks, Scott. And last but not least, Mr. Craig Kennard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, welcome back, Judy. And you have our February's, February's Engineers Report. Went over most of the items at last meeting, so I don't really have anything else to add, other than Mr. Scott and the board is keeping me very busy, and the staff want a lot of capital improvement projects that touch, I think, every department here at the township, so.
I, I agree there.
But thank you for the work.
You're welcome, but you do a good job. Thank you. Okay. Township Manager announcement, are you just upcoming agenda items?
Well, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a, a couple of ordinances in the, in the next couple of months before the board for a recommendation for approval. We do have several people going through our code to pull out stuff that may need attention or refinement, and as this evening, we had a similar activity very early on in our executive session with the Township's Labor Lawyer. So, we're going to, we're, we're gonna be doing that, and you can expect a probably, you know, at least one ordinance revision at least every other month. So, we're probably going to be asking the board for consideration for changing a number of ordinances this year. However, we won't have any tonight. We won't have any on the fifteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Residents, any residents would like to speak tonight? Come on up, Bob.
Come on, Bob. We haven't seen you in a while.
Hello, everyone. Bob Wells, Hollowell Avenue. I have a couple of things. Let's start with the paving. I think the paving people left, so they probably can't answer this question. They're going to do Hollowell, and that development back in there is where I live, and I guess Mr. Kennard could probably answer this. When they go to do the blacktop, are they gonna bring the bed, the blacktop down to bedrock? Because right now, the blacktop is above our properties. We have no curbs. We have no sidewalks. We have no stormwater. And right now, the blacktop's above all the properties, so when the water comes down the street, it's just rolling into everybody's lawns, and it's just a swamp. So, when they do the blacktop, are they gonna bring the road lower than the property, so water stays in the street and goes down to where it's supposed to go?
I can't answer. That's up to Andrew to make that call.
We can't put it on bedrock anyway, because old roads have to have a road base.
Well, down to the, to when it's rock that's underneath it there.
He, the, after they mill, I mean, they evaluate. Andrew's very involved in all that, along with my inspector, so every street's a case by case. I can't speak to the.
Yeah, I can tell you right now, just milling it's not gonna work.
Aaron Terry, she'll, she'll pass that on to Andrew, but that's, that's a contractor's call and Andrew on that type of situation.
Well, the second thing is, they're gonna do work on the Whittaker Basin, I believe. Is that correct? So, last time they worked on Whittaker, they came down Hollowell to get into that basin, and they destroyed our street with the heavy trucks. Are they gonna come in there again? Reason I'm asking, you don't wanna pave it and then go work on Whittaker and destroy the street that is paved.
That's up to the authority. You can take it up with them.
Yeah, we're not sure how, I'm, I'm not sure how we figured that out yet.
Yeah, they, they came in there.
Knowing Mr. Hagie's here tonight and how they operate, if there's any damage.
Well, I'd like to see coordinated before they, you know.
I agree.
Destroy the street and then pave it and then destroy.
We're not about to pave streets and destroy them, Bob. That's not how we operate.
I get that, but you don't wanna.
No, I agree.
I see streets paved, and then they come in there and they cut holes in them.
Well, that happens everywhere, but that's a private.
So, just if we can coordinate that, that doesn't happen.
That's, that's already in the works, to be honest with you. I, I can answer this for you, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
That now, for the last three years or four years, since we, this board took over, there's all kinds of coordination and communication between the authority and here. So, there's, there's a, that disconnect has all but disappeared. So, we, we work together to make sure things like that don't happen.
Okay, but that's good thinking.
No, I.
It's not even good thinking, it's just, it's just good practice.
And we're, and to add on to that, every even land development project now, they're getting copied and involved from day one, as soon as the first letter goes out, which is usually our office gets out there. Dalton is basically a point person with my office staff, and then also here. So, there's actually a lot more communication with land development to try to coordinate. You know, a land development comes in right after we get done paving a road, or they, they did a project, and then they go and pay the authority, and then we have a contractor ripping up, you know, for a new building, so.
Right.
We have, that way, they can see what's coming down the road. I can't guarantee the construction schedule or approval schedule on land development, but at least the authority now is aware of what's in the pipeline for approval, and that's helped out a lot as well.
So, we took a twenty-year loan to pave the streets. Is that money included in this, this payment that's gonna happen?
I'm not the money guy, so I'm not gonna answer that one.
Or is that, that's coming from Liquid Fuels, I believe?
There, there's money from a couple of different avenues. Well, you know, there's different avenues to pay for that. Some of it's capital loans, and some of it's Liquid Fuels, and some of it's, I'll let John speak to that.
Okay.
Wind John down, John.
I guess also the, the corners. Is that the Liquid Fuels? Is that, how is that being paid for?
Wasn't that on the money?
The, the ramps.
Yeah, that all can be included.
And Liquid Fuels?
There's a, John will go over that, but it can be, but I don't, each year's different.
So, in the 2024 budget, there's a million dollars worth of paving budgeted, which is kind of our goal every year, and then three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of curb ramps. Of the million dollars of paving, five hundred thousand is coming from Liquid Fuels. The rest is coming from the capital fund, which got funded years ago. At this point, we've used all the money from the loan proceeds. So, what is left there is pretty much the sale of the stormwater and just other money that's coming in from developers and fees in lieu of, and stuff like that.
All right, thank you. The only other comment I have is, you took away the two public comments. Would you consider putting a public comment in the beginning of the meeting?
Okay, I, I can address that.
Okay, thank you.
The reason, the reason we did that is because on any issue, on any topic that we have on this agenda, the public can comment on anything on the agenda. So, at the end of the meeting, then they can comment on anything other than what's on the agenda. And the reason we did that is because it disrupted the flow of the meeting. We wanted to get the business done. You know, that's our number one thing, is to get the business done for the residents, but the residents have, have the ability to speak during any of the agenda items or after the comments at the end.
Okay. Well, that's why I didn't get a chance to comment on the paving. I just wanted to comment before they left, but that's why I said, can we have it in the beginning, you know, of the meeting?
I thought you just wanted to go home early, Bob.
I like to go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I asked the same question, Bob, because to have public comment at the beginning.
Anybody else have any comments tonight? Oh, my gosh, John's not getting up.
Wait a minute.
John.
John, nothing?
Nothing? You got nothing for us?
Come on, John. We're gonna, we're gonna call him German if you don't come up now.
John Three-Oh-Seven-Four-Joseph-Five-O. Just wanna say, Judy, it's nice to see you.
Thank you.
They can't keep, they can't keep you down. You're up and running.
I'm the luckiest woman alive. I am a lucky person.
Lot of COVID going on out there. I have a lot of people that are telling me they had COVID, or customers and whatever. So, everybody be careful. All right?
Thanks, John.
You got it.
Okay. Supervisor comments. Who would like to go? Jess, how would you like to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd be happy to. I'd just like, like to thank everyone for tuning in. It's nice that we had so many people in the audience tonight. It's important to kind of double-check things and make sure you're checking on your neighbors. I was in the grocery store the other day, and there was a senior lady that was shopping, and she only had a little bit, so she got just a couple tiny things. So, if you're, kind of have your eyes open, kind of look out for people and, and help those around you. Thank you.
Chuck?
Thank you for everyone coming out. I wanted to congratulate the winners on the, the houses, the decorating. Did a great job on them houses. I live near two of them, and they're, the kids love to drive by and see them. Also, Happy Valentine's, everyone, coming up. And, you know, we have a lot of great restaurants in the township that you can, let's keep shopping, going out locally, keep the business in the township.
Good comment there, Chuck. Judy?
Oh, again, I'd like to thank everybody for all the kind words, and Valentine's Day's coming up before our next meeting, so we hope you have all good reports for what you did on Valentine's Day on the fifteenth. And congratulations to the decorated houses. They were fabulous. I mean, I saw some houses this year that you could probably see from Mars, and, and they were really, they were really nice. It's good to be back, and thank you. By the way, today is the first day of African-American Heritage Month, so try to remember that in your school lessons and things that you teach your children this year, and icons that we have from the African-American community. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Ken?
I don't have any other comments, other than when you're running a thirty-four million dollar corporation, and you look at corporations, they all have capital, budget, debt, and loans. And our loans that we took out, that we were originally going to the bank for and paying three, three extra points, we refinanced all that and got them down to like one point two, I think it was, or one point three?
One point three, four, five.
One point three, four, five? Thank you. Four, five. Okay, so we'll say a point and a half. But you can't function unless you have a little bit of debt, and as long as we're not doing what other townships are doing, which is raising the debt fund taxes to pay for all that debt. We haven't raised, when was the latest time we raised the debt fund, John? Never?
I am not sure. I'll tell my dad.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's pretty much never.
Never.
You know, and then as, as a lot of loans come due, then we have the ability to borrow more money to pay for infrastructure improvements for the residents. And that's just how, how corporate business works. So, if you waited to pay your mortgage off, then you would, we wouldn't pave any roads. We wouldn't have any infrastructure improvements in this township. So, the way that that's structured and the way it's set up is that everybody that lives here pays that, and then when they move out, the people that live, that move in pay for it as well. So, not one person or one, it's not going to like, just this group that lives here now. It's spread out over perpetuity, actually. So, it's, it's well done, and it's designed that way by our finance director, and kudos to him. That's all.
Good comments. I would, I'd like to say that what Mr. Hayes is, is discussing about the debt, yes, every big corporation has debt. We seem to be handling that very well. We also are in a much better financial situation than we were. I think it was a really great, productive meeting here tonight. We're gonna be accomplishing a lot with the curb ramps and the stormwater and the roads and the library and Parks and Rec. We've got lots of, lots of things going on, and lots of improvements, which are for our residents. Let's face it, we're here to make the township better for all of you. I want to thank anybody that's tuned in tonight, or anybody that's here tonight that cares enough about the township. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day, especially my husband, Bob, because he's so patient and makes me laugh every day, and I wouldn't be able to do this job without him. So, thank you, Bob. He's so happy I'm doing this, because I'm not home. Anyways. Everybody have a Happy Valentine's Day, and thank you for a very great, productive meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.